Meeting this month down there.
I'll be down there.
Yes, he is, yeah.
The Florida's council meeting.
Florida, yeah.
Got the news here.
Okay, they're live. Want to call this, uh, meeting of the Honeyberg Common Council to work. Fledge allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Dear Father God, thank you for uh, opportunity for all those to serve here in, in this room this evening and for all those that are here to contribute to the meeting, we ask that you be with us and, and guide us and the direction that, that the city needs to be in and that we're here to make decisions for all, for these things, we ask you your son's name, amen. Well, had a chance to see the minutes, so he suggested for improvement by the hearing. A motion to accept. Make the motion to accept the minutes.
Second motion.
Got a first and a second, all those in favors? But just remind you that we do have, uh, uh, Glenn Kissling on a remote here.
Okay, Boltie.
Aye.
Kissling.
Hi.
Bounce, where?
Aye.
McBarren, five eyes, no names.
Uh, any questions on the claims? Your, uh, here, motion to accept.
Motion to accept the claims.
One second.
Got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any pose?
Boltie.
Uh, aye.
Kissling.
Hi.
Bounce, hi, where?
Aye.
McBarren, five eyes, no names.
Motion carries. Uh, first thing before we get to, uh, P C or P D here, our request this evening, I just want to say thank you to all those that were uh, contributed to the Northside Park and then uh, many elected officials and, and a lot of our superintendents were involved in that, it was a great service I thought, uh, today and, um, just want to say thank you and glad to see that open and being utilized by the, by these, the people of that area, so. Going to start first, uh, with, uh, ask chief to come forward.
Welcome. So spoke with the mayor about it a little bit here a couple of weeks ago, um, for better flow within internal situation as far as the police department, we're looking at come to you to request that we change the title from detective sergeant to strictly just a sergeant. And we'll still have two, two detectives and then one sergeant. Um, doing away with the corporal's position but not necessarily removing it from the ordinance. We'll keep it there in the future if whether we need it later on in the future or the next chief or so long, um, but part of the go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Uh, so some of the issues with how we've got it going is we have one detective, one detective sergeant. Um, both detectives will be busy just in caseload. And what we're concerned about is the detective sergeant doesn't have enough time to technically be a supervisor and then also worry about their caseload. Um, as to where the two detectives will report directly to the assistant chief, which is Rusty. Um, he's been in that position before and will and we've had some situations in the past where the patrolman will have a case and then they'll present it to the detective expecting them to take it. And the detective says no, like you will work this case. Well, instead of there being an issue or conflict in between two of our guys, they're going to contact Rusty and let Rusty make that determination and then we'll proceed. And whoever he decides works the case, work the case.
Okay.
Just so we don't have any rift in between our guys. More, more of a morale thing, um, it's gone way up. And that's where we want it to be.
Good.
So but that's some of the benefits from that. So I don't know how we need to.
Well, I get, I'm, I get, I'm a little confused because we have an ordinance establishes positions in the police department, we've got chief of police, assistant chief of police, lieutenant, detective sergeant, corporal narcotics detective and then patrol person, probationary patrol persons.
Yeah.
So I, and it's, so we creating a new position, just sergeant? And leaving detective sergeant there?
I would like to, um, if that's possible, um.
It ju- it's just, it would detective sergeant would be vacant or is that?
Right, correct. Yeah, it wouldn't be like a pay line on the salary ordinance or anything like that at this time, um.
Allows us to have a sergeant without that person being a detective.
Yeah, and they would be over a rotation that we have. They'd be a direction supervisor for, for additional patrolman or, or patrolman.
But we establish a sergeant position, won't we have to put a, a range in there?
Yeah, so, yeah, so first thing we do and we have to amend the ordinance that organizes creates department organization and, and add a sergeant position. And I, and I guess on our salary schedule and our salary ordinance, um, we either delete the detective sergeant and use that range for the sergeant, is that what you're proposing?
Yes.
So we just, we, we leave the detective sergeant vacant and create a the same range for the sergeant, same pay range for the sergeant.
Correct, that was, yeah, that's what I was coming up with.
Yeah, yeah. You can do that, that'd be fine.
So do we currently have a detective sergeant?
We do not. It, we have the position, but it is not a filled position.
So it's not like somebody has, has to take like a demotion to go back to detective.
So we, but we leave, you want to leave the detective sergeant?
In the ordinance.
In the ordinance.
Just not.
Just not fill it.
Yeah.
Would the pay range be the same between the two positions? Sergeant and detective sergeant is the same pay?
Uh, yeah, so the sergeant's, the detective sergeant's position was considered a supervisory role which stuck it above, uh, just a plain detective's position.
Okay.
So, and the detective for us doesn't have any kind of supervisory role.
They're a case worker.
Yeah. They're more so on the serious offenses and crimes against children, stuff like that.
So do we need a motion to?
Well, I'll, I'll just have to bring the ordinances back, the two ordinances I'll bring back to you next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, because we'll have to change both of them, right?
Right.
I don't have objections to change, I just.
We didn't want direct fill to make the changes if it wasn't somebody who was open to at the time, that's, kind of, it kind of came about. You know, really at the time that we didn't have a detective sergeant, didn't have an intent to put it there, but it allowed us to have a sergeant position that could well, it stands with their standard operating procedures really, of how they run their shifts day to day and it's important that they do have a sergeant, it's no, not really important that we have a detective sergeant.
Yeah.
Uh, so sometimes you may so really breaks down some of that conflict that you might have with a detective sergeant.
Yeah, I understand, true.
So really you're just adding a sergeant, it's like
Yeah.
Sergeant at the rate, at the same rate as detective.
Will we leave detective sergeant in the salary ordinance or just take that out completely?
Just not be filled, there, there's several positions that are that.
But leave it in there, we just create another one for sergeant using the pay sa- same period, same pay grade.
That's what you added on, yeah.
Okay.
It's a pretty wide range too, so it's not.
Yeah.
Allows for some movement when principed sergeant.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Good job.
Thank you.
Uh, city calendar is out here for review, some of the things to to look at, I think probably the first one is moving the board of public works, the safety meeting to the second. Uh, Thursday in, in January, uh, because that's, that fell on January second, which was, uh, have an awkward day, uh, following the New Year's Day to have that. So we moved that to the ninth in January. Uh, this has been reviewed, there are four of us reviewed, uh, Tom and I and a couple of our H R department, uh, also, kind of ran through some different scenarios and we discussed the Christmas break, uh, back and forth with superintendents and everybody else and kind of the consensus was uh, the twenty sixth of January, I mean, excuse me, of December, probably nobody was going to be here anyway. Uh, you know, that they probably take that time off. We might as well be closed on that day and if they, people want uh, Christmas Eve off, that could still, still is an option, uh, that they could have to, to use their personal paid time off as they would on that, uh, Friday anyway. Uh, but it's probably going to, from what we saw, looking at calendar, calendars and other calendars, is all of what other businesses are doing in the area too, for those people that want to do. Uh, business at City of Honeyburg is still gives them an opportunity prior to our holidays to pay bills or whatever they need to do to come in to the building. I don't know if you saw anything else on there, but most of it pretty well followed what was this past year and last year both. I don't know of any other dates that really changed. Of course, we did make that October change that was there for the A and Conference.
Yeah, that A and Conference falls between the
Yeah.
Between the meetings this year.
So. That's in French like this.
Okay.
Any questions on it?
Well, that falls on the third week there, so.
Yeah.
So we're open on Christmas Eve. But twenty sixth we're not.
Correct.
Yeah. That falls on Thursday, okay. Paul.
Nice weekend.
Probably going to be pretty calm.
But then we need, I think here is just a motion to accept the calendar and plus we want more discussion.
Calendar with holidays, yeah.
Is it too separate?
With the holidays.
Yeah, I think we did both.
I'll make a motion to accept the calendar and the holidays, uh, as within.
Well, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, Boltie.
Aye.
Kissling.
Hi.
Bounce, where?
Hi.
McBarren, five eyes, no names.
Motion carries, thank you.
Our calendar that.
Had a good bid opening today, better than last time, so if you want to come forward and talk about that, okay? The infamous transit van that we've met numerous conversations about.
Well, the council's thinking about waiting one more month now since he's.
No, you will all receive this, right?
Yes.
So you saw the bids, so our highest bid was twenty eight fifteen. I'm happy with that, but you guys have to be happy with that, so.
So we need a motion to accept that, we do have uh, we did have previously, if you remember, approval to sell the van as inventory and life sports, uh, the next purchase of the next van.
Yes. That, that money goes towards the first person.
Okay, we're not above any feat, above any limit or anything. I'm making a motion to accept a bid at twenty eight fifty.
Okay.
All second.
Got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Boltie.
Aye.
Kissling.
Hi.
Bounce, where?
Hi.
Barren, five eyes, no names.
All right, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your work on that, thank you.
Good job.
Good job, thank you.
Yeah.
Yay, lot better.
Energy superintendent John Reed pull up.
Counselor.
Hello, John.
Well, the gas department had another seven services this month. Two on file when they're ready. We did replace sixty seven gas meters a month, we knew census. Next, over South Ireland, we trunched in five hundred feet of plastic name. Two large service areas there and we tied them together, uh, to prevent during a cold snap, uh, any drop in pressure, but it helped more of a loop in the system, so. They got that all down, we had to wait till it drops, we're in, to hit it be able to do it. So that's all the time then. And U S D I come over and did our annual leak survey. Uh, took about eight days, actually. They did both business districts, Aspen or Honeyburg in Ireland and everything south of sixty four. Did find a couple of small lakes we fixed and then one lake was under the road on South Sycamore. Uh, we had to dig, trench through the road. Steel line, so, uh, got that fixed. Then U S D I also come over and did our cathodic protection inspection for every year. There's a couple of errors, the reading was a little low then, so we're going to investigate that a little farther. Uh, nothing real serious, something we did want to check. And I U R C did come down and did a welding audit two weeks ago, everything really went good, no problems. The orders wanted to see meter set that was welded up, so we took it out, but on O F S, but that was just completed. And I included a picture, as you can see, everything's welded up on, there's no threaded joints. They were really impressed with that. And it's, they've seen some meter sets in different communities, but a lot of threaded joints, which could potentially lead to a small leak. And you can see how much welding has actually done on it. Took some time, but we all did it in-house. So it was a really good job.
That was done by?
Done by all welder.
Yeah, I've, I've seen him weld on a couple occasions. He does some darn good work.
Yeah.
Hitting live lines with that too a lot of times, so.
And actually, the welder, we got to send five samples in every six months. Over to Illinois. They test them to construction. After pipe breaks before the well breaks, it passes, if the well breaks, before the pipe breaks, then it fails. And we haven't had any failures yet, so. That's all to him. Any questions on the gas?
Is that, uh, the annual leak survey that, uh, do I recall that, would they do that once every so many, we do it every we do it like three years out of, out of five or?
Or four out of five we'll do it.
And they do it once out of five?
Yeah. Other required to do it. An outside third party can come in and do it every five years.
Just for curiosity, how do they find a leak under the road?
Uh, they got their leak detection.
Okay, it's sniffers.
It's coming up through the blacktop or?
You got those sniffers on the front of their little vehicle.
Very sensitive, so.
Okay. Interesting.
Did find a small leak, and after we arrested, we did find the leak under the road.
Is it a proper? In proper fitting or just a bad, just old?
Old, old, where rock kind of wore into it. Old steel service.
Yeah, they don't, they didn't bed those lines years ago, anything, they just threw them back in the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything for us to go on the gas?
Oh, that's a good deal, I'm, we do, I know that we do our own so many times and I couldn't remember what it was, it's four out of five we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good deal, we save a lot of, save a lot of money doing it ourselves.
Seven hundred dollars to do it, from U S D I to come over and do it.
Yeah.
We sent one crew member out with them, they run the route.
They do.
That being said, I U R C requires me to personally hand out once a year elected officials, legal counsel.
There's, I got two.
What do, it's good. It goes in the records and they, when it comes down to an audit, they make sure that we do hand out management handout. These. Will be an open book quiz next meeting.
Got the answers?
You have a sample of that?
As required, I got to hand these out once a year. You did something. Bring it over on Thanksgiving and all of it. Just going on mail gears, do you?
Put it in my mailbox.
Any other questions on the gas?
No.
With the electric, and then for services then for all J roll, there's five lots left. That's what we built on, and that division will be full. And they did hang all the Christmas decor on forest trees and we did add uh, banner brackets and then the brackets got, the banners got put up. So it's this month. And we did some tree trimming. But it's, some of the trees were approaching on some electric lines in certain areas, so we took care of that. And we did finish League Stadium light conversion. As you can see, put a couple of pictures in of before and after. Replaced a couple of poles, leading to League Stadium. You have a picture we need light standards with the transformers on and then one, after it's complete. When we run conduit down to the bottom. In the one picture, you can see the transformers off to the side, bad map. We did get all the lights down down there.
Lot of trenching.
Mm-hmm. I bet so.
We bored under the stadium, uh, field.
Yeah, and the conduit goes all the way, you know?
There's conduit from transformer up to the lights.
Yeah.
We just run it up to that and tied it in. But made it a lot safer. Cleaned it up.
Yeah.
They change out the actual bulbs, like they've been talking about going L E Ds and down there, and then just run out of that.
We just went up to the transformer, see.
He took the live wires off the pole, off the hours, so. That's all, that's the big deal there.
Mm-hmm, that's all underground.
Yeah.
Lot safer.
Yeah.
Wish it would ten.
Then we did, just the temporary power hooked up at the wastewater. Uh, we did disconnect one of the permanent transformers down there. You can see we, uh, had a splice box and then a transformer. You can see how high they, amount of it.
Yeah.
We had to put scat and we got to work on the splice box. And that's what they're requiring, how high to put them. The splice box and the permanent transformer is temporary until we get our new transformer in. That's temporary, we'll probably be there for a year.
Six foot off the ground?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You see the steps they made getting up to it. The transformer.
What's the reason for the height, John?
Flooding, I think.
Merit, I'll explain that.
Yeah, basically floodplain.
The floodplain.
Uh, we're that low. When the sewer department will be the lowest spot down.
The permanent setting for the permanent transformer and the uh, backup generator will be that high too.
Presently, it doesn't flood because of the what, the, the berm that's put back behind on the other side. But for our funders to, to prove it, we had to put it up out of the floodplain because they will not provide funds for anything that's in a floodplain.
Right.
More concrete.
Yeah, uh, there's about, uh, we did have to add to the pad, and mainly that was for our convenience to make sure that we had everything, the splice box, everything was all on one pad, originally it was going to be on two, which would have been a service headache for for us going forward, so there was a small, used some of the contingency to move it forward, but
Yeah.
Did make some cuts in the budget total anyway, so had more than covered for that.
But temporary is all up and running. Then I did finish the job, touch a class on North Van Buren. Uh, you can see the picture before and after. They had an outage here, worked with wire electric. Maybe it's some inside work for touch a class while we switch all the transformers over. Put them on a pole, get rid of that old platform setting. That platform setting, probably the original one, back in the sixties. You know, getting kind of ridiculous. Or maybe they decided to change it up. But turned out pretty good. Then I need approval for quotes for two twenty five K V A transformer. For the airport terminal, the new terminal. Uh, got three bids. Brownstown with the lowest, fifteen thousand, eight seventy one, fifteen. You can see what the other quotes were. Quite a difference.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, it is.
It's doubled.
That's a thirty four week timeframe to get it in. Three days.
We need a motion to that only.
Yeah, so we need a, we have motion to accept the, to Brownstown.
But it's Brownstown, it's a G D pro elect.
Motion made.
Got a first, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Boltie.
Aye.
Kissling.
Hi.
Bounce, where?
Hi.
McBarren, five eyes, no names.
Then the last item on the agenda. In the discussed replacement of the two thousand eighth small bucket truck uh, perco in their yearly inspections. And you can see the report, I included the report. Truck's just getting worn out. You can read the booms are getting in bad shape. You can see several nicks and gathers on the fiberglass extendable boom. P T Os leaking hydraulic oil. Boom supports rusted, cracked at the base. Now the upper fiberglass boom had damaged, some boom support impact area. And the truck uh, been leaking oil for a long time. We kind of held off on that. The oil pump or the water pump uh, went out on it, you can see in the picture, we took it over to Bob's Auto. They took the cab off of it. Replaced the water pump.
He's pretty normal.
Yeah. And they replaced the turbo exhaust tube while they had it off. Asked them to fix the oil leak while they had cab off, they said they couldn't. They had to throw the engine apart into it. Unless they just lean it. That was last summer.
Is that oil pump or was it?
Oil pump. Water pump, while they had it off.
Yes.
But it's it's not getting any better.
I think the last picture tells a whole story, so.
I was actually in the small bag truck working it here several months ago. It wouldn't, it, it wouldn't contract, so I had to stand it straight up, like gravity slowly bring it in. Sometimes it does it, sometimes it doesn't.
Hmm, that's not good. Yeah, but they might be in a spot you can't stand it up.
Hmm.
Yeah, so, the other day they're trimming trees with it. Extended it out, trimmed some trees on the lower end of the tree. They'd get it with the truck out. Probably, it wouldn't retract, so they had to move the truck out, stand it up.
It's got too much leverage on.
Yeah, like that, hydraulics are good.
Then it gets.
Brought on, seventeen years old. And we kind of talked to a couple of manufacturers about it. It's a about the life expectancy.
That's a pretty good life for that truck.
What, what truck do we have on order now?
You can see the last picture I have. So if you can push your truck or car, you push it to the point of failure. See, you can push your truck or car, you push it to the point of failure.
Mm-hmm.
But aerial device like butter truck, your budget, you don't want to push it to the.
You don't want to be on that side of the.
Failure.
No.
You can see in the pic, last picture I included. That happened two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Actually, that's about the exact same truck that we're trading in.
Yep.
So the truck we have ordered, we replaced the one you're talking about now, or is this totally different?
Truck we have on order, we ordered last.
Yeah. It was a year, year and a half ago, right?
Year and a half ago.
Yeah.
It's replacing. That truck.
Okay.
Now and there, but.
And that's our two time, that's a bigger one.
That's a big bucket truck, it's sixty-four.
Yeah.
So you're going to be asking for a smaller one in?
It's a. Two thousand eight too.
This one, what's this, a thirty footer?
Forty.
This is a little forty, the older one on?
Small one, forty. I think it was a sixty.
Hmm.
You can see the failure on this truck.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm very good.
After the brand came out of the hydraulic cylinder. Actually, we had our hydraulic cylinder, that exact same cylinder we built. Probably a year ago. We took it apart. Put all new seals and everything in. But you push it to. Point of failure for this. You don't want that to happen. Do you have approval to maybe move forward with getting a replacement? Comments?
Are you asking just to get to?
Seek bids?
Seek bids?
Seek bids.
Seek quotes, bid something more in?
Well, it'll be a sealed bid. Process. It's going to be around a hundred eighty to two hundred.
Have you heard anything about what delivery times are on these now?
These smaller trucks are quicker. We checked with one of the companies, Altech. He said maybe two years. Uh, Terex.
Did you say quicker?
You're quicker. Instead of three.
Truck's six year.
Oh, wow.
Six years. Terrex. It said maybe a year. Maybe this summer he said, there'll. Depends. On how fast we uh, place an order.
And how many people order in front of us.
Yeah.
Like I said, it'd be a sealed bid process we go through. There's not any. In the account.
Yeah. Uh, we trade a truck in or?
One.
Or will, will, will we attempt to trade or? Well, I know, but I don't, will they even take it though? I don't know.
I assume they will do it. Just won't get much more.
Yeah.
He loves sealed bids.
But she's not here.
No, I. There's no reason not to.
I guess.
So we did a motion to seek bids.
Yes.
For a.
Process or seek bids.
I'll make a motion to approve. Uh. Moving forward on getting bids for replacement vehicle.
When we say new truck comes in, should last another fifteen twenty years.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is like I say, time to get, it's going to be eighteen years old.
Yeah. Absolutely. The words out.
I'll second the, second the motion.
First, second all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bulte.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
Alan.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Five eyes, no names.
First moving electric.
Thank you, John. Get a chance to look at those lights at Lake Stadium, made a very neat job of getting the conduit to the top and.
Yeah.
Looks very good.
Yeah, that's. That's a nice deal, get them wired all there.
All right, thanks, John.
Next, we have, uh, Watersup to Jerry Austin.
Good evening.
Hello, Jerry.
Aye.
We'll jump into distribution. Um, beginning of this month, utility supply out here north of town, uh, held in the AWWA. Which is the American Waterworks Association. They held a training slash refresher course for. Um, water distribution, so we had six employees that attended that class, if they also are able to get CE use there for their licenses. So, um, uh, other than that. Um, all the trees that we removed down by the spillway, helped the electric department. Um. In the past months. We, uh, finally had Tree Pros was finally able to get in to do the stump grinding, so. We went down, uh, I know the Sawyer Room, there's a few of those trees that, uh. We kept kind of high. And. He suggested we cut the stumps down, that way it doesn't take them any longer than what they have to be able to cut costs, so. We went down there, we cut stumps, uh, they spent two days grinding stumps, we ran a total of sixty-eight.
Hmm.
And, uh, then we followed up behind them and cleaned up the mess, we didn't have them do that, we took back those downwind dump trucks and stuff and. Cleaned all that up, took care of that. Um, we are still continuing to work on lead and copper inventory to identify the unknown services that we have. Um, we'll do that throughout the winter, as long as it's not below freezing to where we can use our hydro excavator, we'll. Fill it with water and we'll continue to go out and. Keep chipping away at those. Um, IDIM has moved a new date that all of the unknown. Services have to be verified by October sixteenth of twenty twenty-seven. So. But, uh, we, we don't plan to do that, we plan to have that done by, uh, by the end of next year and any lead lines that we do know. Should be replaced by them, we shouldn't be able to wash our hands of this. This, uh, new rule revision. So, uh, other than that. We had, um. A meter service that didn't have a shut-off valve on it. Um, on Fifth Street, so we had to go in there, dig up that service line, we were able to freeze the line, uh, we use, uh, carbon dioxide. Uh, a tool to put around the water line to be able to freeze it, so we can cut it, do our work. And, uh, be able to unthaw the line, so we're not having to crimp lines and put, uh.
Hmm.
Stress on the copper. So, uh, we took care of that. Um. Then we had, uh. One of the storms this past month, we had took down a decent sized tree behind Casey's general store, um, it was on our right away, fell on a fire hydrant. So we did go out, cut up that, we got rid of that tree to make sure there wasn't nothing wrong with the fire hydrant. Took care of all that, and then, um. The, uh, street department is working up on Geiger Street between Fourth and Fifth Street, installing new sidewalks and driveway entrances, um. During that work, there was a few of our meter pits that with the new concrete they're pouring, would have ended up in the concrete. Uh, we try to keep from that, they're hard to work on, if you ever have to pull more than just the lid off, you've got to cut concrete.
Hmm.
So anytime, anytime that's, uh. Comes up, we try to relocate those. Um. One of them was a lead service line that we did have on our list on our inventory, the other one was copper, so. The lead one we replaced all the way back to the main, the copper we actually were able to dig up and swing it over to the side. Uh, than where they were. So. Uh. Other than that, we've been. Kind of doing our winter work, we've been insulating water towers, um, all our distribution buildings. Uh, and then we did this past month, have new D pressure washing come in, we kind of put it on hold. I don't, I don't have it on here, but, um, our South Water Tower, we put it on hold, the Southland was talking about changing their logo on the tower. Uh, they decided against that. So we finally got that tank washed, it's been a while. Um, other than that, the, uh, the big one on here, our big project for the month was the intersection of First and Jackson Street. Uh, I'd spoke on that in the past about the six inch, they continue to give us problems between Jackson and Main Street there. Uh. Once we dug that intersection open, the pictures that I included, the top pictures is the way it's set. Before. Um, there towards the top of the picture, there's a valve box riser, there's a backhoe sitting behind it there, just for directional purposes. Um, it came down the road in an eight inch and reduced to a six inch. And continued down Main Street. And then reduced to a four inch and went north and south down Main. That six inch main was the one giving us problems, the four inch we were trying to kill two, so. Um, and then up there in the same vicinity where that valve box is, there's a T there, and that line actually comes over in nineties. There on the right side of the picture, and that eight inch continues on down to Main Street and ties into Main Street and First, First Street intersection. Um, so with that, the bottom picture is kind of how we. Uh, replumbed all that, there was an old four inch that ran it up. Jackson Street, Two Second Street, it was live all the way to Two Second Street. Uh, when we redid that water main last year, we, uh, cut and capped that main. So this, this year we were able to kill that four inch. Um, and then we retied in that new C nine hundred six inch that. Ran, uh, north up Jackson Street there. And then. Had to tie in a four inch water main and then a two inch service that ran to the fire department, the services in their building as well. So, just kind of showing you what's there and what we did to clean it up and decommission water mains, so we, uh. We decommissioned roughly a thousand foot of water main that wasn't in service, wasn't providing any service for any building, any facility. And, uh, only causing us issues.
Good deal.
Uh, other than that, that's it for distribution. Uh, our filter plant. We, uh, there again, we worked on winterizing all of our facilities, um. The filter plant is heated with individual gas heaters throughout the plant, so every year we go through. Light pilot lights, get them turned on, um, make sure the. Chimneys on or cleaned out, don't have any birds nesting and things like that, so we're ready for the winter time. Uh, also with that, I know we spoke. Um, I guess two council meetings ago, I get you guys approved, uh, moving forward with Commonwealth with our filter issue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've. Commonwealth has been out, we are still working towards that. Um, at this point, we still don't have anything to present. Uh, we're still working on getting all the. Paperwork side of it done in order to. Start looking at contractors to come in and do that work. Um, and then our metering system, we are starting to see some of those large diameter meters, so we still will install those as we go.
Okay, good deal.
Other than that, it's all I have.
Thank you, Jerry.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything from City Attorney Phil Snyder?
Uh, just briefly, last, uh, meeting, uh, citizen approached the. The council to, to discuss the possibility of some type of, uh, leniency on the burning ban, city burning ban. Uh, open burning is, is controlled totally in Indiana by, uh, state statute and by the regulations of. Enacted by IDEM, a Department of Environmental Management. And, uh, under state law, we can be more restrictive than state law, but we can't be more lenient. Our current ordinance are no more restrictive than state law, so we have no room to give. The, the, I guess the resolution for that particular property owner would be. That there is a, an exception in state law that allows, uh, property owner to appeal to the Indiana. Air Pollution Control Board for a special permit to do. A burning of, of clean wood and other clean products, uh, on a case by case basis. So he would have to, he would, and our ordinance does allow that, if, if he has a special permit, it does allow burning of clean wood and other clean. Uh, items, uh, if, uh, if the, uh. Individual holds an Indiana Air Pollution Control Board permit, so that would be. There's nothing we can do from an ordinance standpoint to, to, uh, assist him. He would have to petition, uh, the Air Pollution Control Board for a special variance permit. So that's my report to you on that issue.
Is he aware of that?
I, I, I haven't spoken with him.
Okay.
I'm just curious how long it would take for a. Person to. Apply and get a response back, if that's a week or?
Gee, I don't know.
Oh, boy.
There's, there's some standards, I'm sure. There's an application, I'm sure you, they would have to fill out, and there's some standards they have to comply with, including having, uh. Uh, available, um, I think you have to have a fire department available, um. During the burning process, but those are all regulations that are set by, by IDEM.
I don't think we can. I think it would be months.
I think too, we wouldn't be the ones that would apply, it would be.
There'd be him, he'd be the property owner.
If he wanted to apply, then he must.
What about the cattle question?
Well, uh, yeah, we'd have to be rezoned and, and. And actually, and not only rezoned, but he would have to be disannexed. Uh, we, you're not allowed to have livestock in the silos unless. You know, unless the grandfather used, so, not conforming use, that was in existence when we had. Annexed the property.
From what we saw, we couldn't find any evidence that it'd ever been agricultural.
No.
Okay. Not since that family has owned a very. Uh. Yeah, and you know, I'll, I'll have a conversation with, we can get something really ethical from. Phil, that would be nice, you know, system opinion, based upon what you read there, and I know that, uh. What little research and talking to people that normally those. Exceptions are made when it's too dangerous to move that material. It's an elm tree that they don't want. You know, to kill other trees and that type of thing, but I, I don't know what exceptions they would make. Uh, but normally if it's a. Public safety issue, a lot of times is, is what they're probably most common. There he is, I'll, I'll, we'll give, give John, uh. Heads up and speak to him, so. I promised him that. I'll reach out to him to see if he needs to.
If there is any local mulching company that would be mobile enough to go out there and. Grind or, you know, mulch that step up for a, for a homeowner.
I had, I had a couple of large trees once and that's what I did, I went, rented one. Behind my SUV and brought it home.
Do what you say.
Did, did what I could. And, um.
Anybody with a large equipment, I think there's a mobilization charge, it's pretty significant. Uh, it is for the street department, I know.
You can't, uh. It's not really.
It's not that.
Good, good anymore just to come up for one tree.
Yeah.
Yeah, three or four. Arch trees and to get them out, it's, it's that. It costs about the same for two trees as it does three or four. Nothing cheap anymore. Thank you, Phil. Clark Treasurer, Tom Stiffling?
I have nothing.
Uh, we have any council items? Any citizen items? Uh, citizens items are.
Now you can see your home is, yeah.
Jan, no.
Hi, Janet.
We have the problems with South City more. Huge shout out to our guests and our street department, because they explained to me what the problem was and how they were fixing it. So they were very kind, courteous, informative, and totally worked with us to let us know this is what's happened. Our indicator actually was not the smell, it was, we had dead grass. So we, this smell, you didn't hear, but you saw the dead grass and I thought it was me. So huge shout out because we do have a very professional organization that will speak to all the. Property owners and say, this is what's going on, and they take their time, and they were very nice. Um, and right now we're ready to get rid of the steel plates and everything, but yeah. Good. Um, also daily worker here in the city of Honeyburg. And so many concerns with the tripping hazards. Um, there's one place. On Second Street. That has like the whole, I guess the drill holes. That is sunk down, that we've tripped across because it's on the, it's between sidewalks, right? Um, and then also the cause of concern in our community with the hoarding and some of the buildings that are falling there. Uh, in our own city limits, seeing these sheds that are. Rotten and falling in, um, and also hoarding. Um, hoarding is a mental health disorder. And the only way that can be fixed is if you address it. And so I will be going to the meetings on Tuesday morning to better learn and understand why policies and procedures have been determined. And see if we can't work to make our city look better. Um, and to really address. Some of the things that just really holds us back, because if someone's driving through to look for housing and they see a. Shed that's falling down or piles of. Things in their yard. It's frustrating as a property owner that we have to go through more things. More restrictions to better our house. And we have our hands tied than someone who is. You know, like we live right beside that has a problem. So again, I will be much more active to better understand where policies and procedures come from. But definitely wanted to be here to say huge shout out to the gas department and the street department. Um, we do have a very good team and just appreciative as a landlord.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
No.
Yeah. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items? We hear, uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Yeah, first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Bulte.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
Alan.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Five eyes, no names.
We are done.
It get very cold this week.
Call this adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah.